I had a meltdown last night.
Huh?
He had a meltdown last night. Came home, he does biotolite on Mondays and Wednesdays and sometimes on the weekends. Plays hockey and usually runs all that stuff. Not leaving. Came home from school today, went to bed. That's what he's out.
Out.
Out. He's like, oh. He's like, oh. He's like, oh. That's the Marcus's class.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just know. Million dollar.
How's he liking 720?
He doesn't like 720.
Okay, that's my mind.
My older one is different. Younger one?
We just got new iPhones now.
Turn it off.
Yeah, we were here two weeks ago.
I bet. How'd it go? Was it as good as you had?
No.
Because it was a public meeting, huh? I saw you in the office.
It is something that we very sort of do. And we put together.
All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strick.
Here.
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn is excused. Thank you.
All right, we do not have minutes, so moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Winchester, do you have anything to disclose?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Gardner?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Strick?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney?
Nothing.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Krishna?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Anderson?
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures as well. Moving on to item C2, case 2019-0164. Do we have a report?
So for this, it's a concept report. It's an informational item. There's no official report that we're giving tonight. However, it involves Spruce Street from Dowling Road to 68th Avenue. And it is partially an extension, partially an upgrade. And the project team is here if any questions come up regarding this. And I'm obviously able to address any questions regarding the process going forward. It will be back as a design study report.
All right, any questions for the staff or for the petitioners? Commissioner Spinelli?
I had just had a question regarding if there is any future plans south of 68.
Stole my question.
So I'm here for Dowell. My name is Brad Nalcik. And Commissioner Spinelli, that is not in our scope at this time.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or for the petitioner? I do have another question. I saw that one area of concern was for the neighbors of budding where that road is going to come in was flooding in the backyards. Is there anything that is in the plans to help mitigate that?
Yes, Commissioner Bailey. So the existing roads there during breakup actually Dowell is also with, partially with the municipality. One of the designers of the snow disposal facility there. So the areas are pretty well wetlands. And it's, that's the area south of the Chugatch Access Road that's there. And just to the west of the snow disposal facility. There's currently an AWU water line that's in there that's actually, it was in, it was installed, gosh, over 40 years ago. So that area has always been kind of a concern. The water, they actually pump and it goes into the yard. So what we're looking at doing there is installing some sort of a barrier. We haven't quite designed it yet, a drainage system. And then on the west side of the road, we're actually going to have probably tie-ins to a storm drain system or something so that when they pump, they have some place to pump it to. Currently, right now, their yards, they kind of pump out of their backyard and have no place to go. And it kind of recycles itself.
So it might actually make it better than it was before because there'll actually be some draining mechanism.
This has been a concern since like 2010 that we know of. So we're going to do our best to try to make it better, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the petitioner? Seeing non-staff, you always have to remind me with these, do we move it forward with an approval? Or what would the commission, what should we move for at this time?
So this time for the constant report, there's an informational item, so there's no action required on the commission, of the commission. The, whatever points and questions the commission raises tonight will be required to be addressed by the design study report. So the content of the discussion or any, you know, questions you have will come back later and be addressed. But there's no action you have to take tonight.
All right. That could be why I don't remember is because I have nothing to remember. So with that in mind, commission, is there anything that people would like to add before we resolve this item and move forward that would get carried over to the design study report? Seeing nothing, thank you petitioners and staff for walking us through that. Moving on to item E1, I believe we'll need a motion to postpone. Moved by Commissioner Looney, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. And I believe that is postponed till January 13th. Is that correct? All right. Commissioner Strick, you're in the queue? Oh. Seeing no, is there any objection for the motion postponed? Seeing no objection, it is postponed. Moving on to case G1, staff, can we have a report? Oh. Before we move into public hearings, I would like to speak to which the public hearing process goes by. The procedure which, the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of their time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes except for commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we hear the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The planning department has identified a need to encourage the inclusion of open-air front porches into the design of detached single-family dwellings. The residential designs most often seen by our department place emphasis on maximizing interior living space by designing a structure that is at or near maximum allowable lot coverage. Because covered front porches are considered in lot coverage calculations, they are often let, left out of a design to accommodate more interior living space. Including front porches into the design of a detached, single-family dwelling helps to bridge the gap between public and private space. Front porches encourage residents to relax and recreate within the front yard. This places more eyes on the street and facilitates relationship building between neighbors. As a result, communities can grow stronger by developing relationships with each other, neighborhood aesthetics improve, and the level of petty crime can be reduced. This amendment modifies Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 6, Subsection 030B2 to grant a lot coverage exemption for front porches that project a minimum of four feet from the front-facing and street-facing facade, have a minimum width dimension of eight feet, and are open on three sides. This is being requested to help encourage and incorporate the addition of front porches into the designs of existing and new detached, single-family dwellings. We are requesting that this exemption only apply to porches meeting this criteria to discourage the snout house and tuck-under, single-family home model that has been prevalent over the last few decades. Applying this exemption to both commercial and multifamily structures was considered but was not included due to existing open space requirements for those developments. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions the commission may have. So thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I had a couple of quick questions, I think. The first one, I think, is relatively straightforward, and that's just in the proposed amendment, adding, I guess, a new exemption, subsection F. D and E, I think, would need to be modified to move kind of the "and" that's currently in D down to E. Is that something that we would want to handle today or does that get kind of proved separately? If that makes sense.
Through the chair, Commissioner, I guess that makes sense. And I think we could classify that as like a Scribner's error.
Sure.
We could just add that in a later revision before it goes to the assembly.
Okay. My other question was, in the language that's proposed for F, it says unenclosed or only partly enclosed as by a handrail on three sides. It wasn't clear to me if the intent is to say that you can have a handrail and nothing else or if as by is saying, like, for example?
So through the chair, as by a handrail appears in two other sections in code, so we wanted to make the language consistent. So you could either have a handrail, but exactly what is a handrail isn't crystal clearly defined in code. It could be something like a stone wall. It could be something like a wooden handrail. And it isn't or. So it's unenclosed or partly enclosed is by a handrail on three sides.
Okay. And so there's not a definition for a handrail, though, and so that might include something, you say, like a partial stone wall? It doesn't, in other words, there's no requirement that it be open beneath whatever the handrail is, that it could be like a limited wall? Is that the intent?
That's, through the chair, that is correct. That is possible. But as written, you do have the option of either keeping it open or having a handrail. And handrail is defined in code.
Oh, it is, okay.
And if you're curious, I could read you the definition here once I pull it up. Actually, through the chair, not to delay this any further, I can't, Chapter 14 does not have a definition for handrail. But I do recall that a handrail could either be, you know, say, sight obscuring or screening if you're comparing it to the standards for fencing. So you could either have a handrail with your traditional wooden slats or you could do a handrail that was sided to match the facade of the home.
I guess just to, I just want to make sure I understand what a hand, so it's not, it's not defined in Chapter 14, but does it have the definition in, in other sections? In, like, fencing? Is that what you're saying?
Through the chair, so the example I was giving you was just comparing it to fencing standards. You know, we have a sight obscuring, screening, and ornamental. I do not have a definition to read for you out of Chapter 14 for handrail. However, I am certain it appears in other areas of code. I just can't seem to locate those right now.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
All right, thanks. And then the final question I had was the reference to considering commercial multifamily structures but not included due to, due to open space requirements for those. What are those requirements?
So they vary, but it's roughly, I believe, off the top of my head, I think it's 5% open space.
And does that preclude, I guess, how does that play out? So does that, so there's a, there's a minimum open space requirement for those types of construction? And then I guess the thought is that if there's a building that otherwise takes up all the space that's available for building, then this would have to be an exception to the open space requirement in addition to the lot coverage? Or I guess, what's my question? That's not clear. I realize, my question is just if, I guess I didn't entirely understand the basis for not including this if we want to have it, if we want to have the option for porches for not including it for multifamily structures as well.
So through the chair, kind of the laser beam focus of this AO is to try and improve neighbor-to-neighbor relationships by exposing them to each other essentially. Try and get people out in the front yard so that they're waving and saying hi to their neighbors as they walk by. On a multifamily complex, you know, we have open space requirements with the intent that the residents of that multifamily structure will use that open space requirement as a community and therefore get to know each other. So it kind of serves the same purpose, just a little different.
Right, that makes sense to me. And then I realize I have one final question. I apologize, I think this is my last one. Are, we're recommending approval for these, is that what we're doing?
Through the chair, the commission could either recommend approval, denial, you could amend, make amendments.
Yeah, sorry, not to, not to commit us to one course or the other, but it's a recommendation?
Correct, yeah, recommendation to the assembly.
Are there, are there criteria that we should be making findings on for these?
Through the chair, there isn't specific approval criteria for these, however, some findings would be much appreciated.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Anderson?
I just had the same question, maybe follow-up on Commissioner Gardner's on, not specifically multifamily, but duplex or triplex. I think there is, multifamily has open space requirement, but a duplex or a triplex, I think even a fourplex is not a multifamily. So why those three types of housing, if they're allowed in the same zoning, wouldn't qualify for the same?
Sure, so through the chair, the ordinance that we have prepared for you tonight is very conservative. I could say that we don't have an exact reason to not include duplexes and triplexes. I think we're open to that suggestion. However, we just chose to bring a conservative ordinance to you tonight and also gather your thoughts in seeing if you saw any validity in including duplexes or triplexes.
And then maybe if there was some discussion on the 200 square feet instead of, I think lot coverage is usually a percentage of lot size, so 200 square feet could be a lot or it could be a little depending on the lot size. And also the eight-foot minimum dimension, why that came up?
So through the chair, the eight-foot, eight-foot minimum dimension came up just due to, if you look at old housing plans from, you know, the Victorian or Craftsman-style era, eight feet is, tends to be the minimum dimension that you see. Six feet's not quite deep enough to have, you know, a family there with, say, young children or a dog or have a party on your front porch. Six feet's not quite enough space, four feet certainly not. So the intent is to have this be meaningful space that people can utilize, that's large enough for them to utilize but not overbearing to actually get them out and on the front porch. And I apologize, what was your second question?
The 200 square feet, instead of a percentage, why it was just a fixed square footage? Or why, how the 200 feet came up instead of 150 or?
Yeah, so through the chair, yeah, kind of the same rationale with the 200 square feet. We just wanted it to be an easy number, but also a meaningful number. 100 square feet might be, you know, why even bother write the AO, take the time to do it for 100 square feet? 300 square feet might be a little too much. So 200 square feet was just, was just right.
I could see a few instances where somebody would want to add a front porch, but that, in addition to lot coverage, they also have setbacks to pay attention to. And maybe the eight feet, I mean, eight feet is a pretty significant distance to push a house back from their already front yard setback. So I don't know if you'd be willing to consider a five or six-foot minimum dimension for the depth, just to maybe pick up on some of those problems that might arise.
So through the chair, we do have an existing provision in code that allows a covered front porch to encroach five feet into a front yard setback. So I don't know if it's worth amending that section or if you have any additional thoughts on it.
No, that's, that's good. Thanks for pointing that out.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. If duplexes or triplexes were to be considered, would you consider that a porch per unit would better meet the intent of this, the purpose of this ordinance? Or is the, or would sort of capping the square footage allowed sort of be a greater consideration for the department?
Through the chair, that's a good point, having it, you'd almost have to have a larger exemption if you had a larger structure, like, say, a duplex. But I'd say we haven't really sat down and thought about that. If we did a duplex or a triplex, would we have a larger lot coverage exemption? I'd say it's something we could look into for sure.
Thank you. My second question is about one of the community concerns that I think was voiced was about what, you know, open means and, and that someone might eventually enclose it and that being a concern. And I'm just hoping you can define a little bit more what open is. Would, you know, say, a screened porch count under that?
So through the chair, screen porch would count. Open just means, jogging my memory here, but I believe it means 50% or more is unenclosed.
Thank you.
I had a follow-up question about potentially multifamily and duplex, triplexes as well. I understand that multifamily does have open space reserved. However, I actually think that it is the multifamily places, the duplexes and the triplexes that have the least amount of people kind of out on the street, being more involved in their neighborhood community because they have less permanency there, so less need of investment. So I think actually those places might benefit the most from drawing people out into the street and getting them engaged. And so I think that might be something worth reconsidering. However, I'm not sure if it's outside of the staff's scope to expand it towards multifamily or if you even know the ramifications of what that would look like.
Through the chair, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. And, yeah, because you'd be going into the residential design standards for multifamily, which are quite more complex than single-family dwelling design standards.
Adding to that, often what I have seen is that those open spaces are reserved, kind of enclosed, within the multifamily structure as opposed to really connecting the multifamily structure out onto the street. And so I feel like a lot of the things such as bringing more eyes to the street, building connections between neighbors, it's not, that could be an opportunity to facilitate this here. Also, I think Commissioner Krishna brought up a really good point regarding the multifamily or the duplex, triplex, whether or not it should be, they each get an individual section. And I think, again, with a duplex, having them both maintain a potentially combined, a combined porch would kind of, it brings up some issues with co-ownership of sides of duplexes that, maybe that's a reason we don't want to get into it, but I don't think we want to exclude people from being able to have them. Yeah, I think generally I just have a few questions when we get down to some of the specifics. I'm not sure if I'll get clarity by the end of it, but a couple of things. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Anderson?
If we had recommendations for including other types of properties on this, is there any projects that are, like, waiting for this to happen? Or is it, are you aware of anything that would be held up if we didn't make action tonight?
Through the chair, no. I don't believe this would hold up any projects.
Thanks.
Great question. Seeing no one, oh, Commissioner Gardner?
I guess just on that same line, is that, given kind of the posture of this, is that an option to, were the commission to kind of go that route to look into the possibility for duplexes or triplexes? Or do we have to kind of do a yes or no recommendation from here? Is that our only option?
Through the chair, I think recommendations are welcomed.
But I mean, I mean, does it necessarily have to go to the assembly next? Or is it possible to send it back for additional consideration?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we could postpone the item and we could hear public testimony and close public testimony. And then if we find that we need additional clarification from staff, we could go back to staff. Is that, I think we've done that in the past.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson, are you back in the queue? All right, is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Step up onto the mic. Let me know if you're here representing yourself or an organization or a group and state and spell your name for the record if you can.
Good evening. My name is Karen Kassek-Michaelson. I'm representing my company, which is Michaelson and Daughter Construction. And I'm also representing the Anchorage Home Builders Association. I'm immediate past president. I worked with Michelle McNulty a long time since probably this time last year creating this ordinance. This ordinance was specifically designed for a single-family residence. So the inclusion of duplexes and triplexes, although it's a, it's a really interesting idea, I would love to see the body move forward with the single-family residence version of this. We created this ordinance so that we could have more community involvement, so that we could have safer communities, so that people could have safer communities, so that people could see from their front porches more of what's going on, on the streetscape and on their neighbors' properties. I do have a property that is waiting on this ordinance before CO, a beautiful home that we demolished, a 1950s house, designed a brand-new home, and it has a beautiful, almost 200-square-foot front porch. The, the, the inclusion of the other properties, I think, is important, but I don't have my Title 21 with me tonight, but there is a section there for multifamily. And it seems to me that there's so many, many different design options available when you go into the multifamily, triplex arena, that those really need to be handled in their own section, whether they're stacked, spread, whatever their differences are. This intent, this ordinance intent was strictly to promote better community for the single-family residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else from the public wishing to testify this time? Thank you.
Okay, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Kathy Gleason. I'm currently president of Ternigan Community Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this tonight. Part of our comments that we put together does address the possibility of allowing exemptions for multi-housing units. And so it looks like we may be on the same page, but I'll go ahead and provide our, our testimony that we put together. We appreciate the efforts by the planning department to make our neighborhoods safer, more connected, and encouraging more attractive, friendly design of homes, such as having front porches. Our TCC Land Use Committee reviewed the proposed change and provides the following comments and questions. Firstly, it seems minor, but we recommend not using the word encourage in the name of the proposed ordinance. While rationale is stated as being to encourage this type of design, the code change itself would simply allow this exemption. So using a more neutral term such as allow would be preferable than encourage. So we know that this was written to apply only to single-family homes. However, we thought that it would be beneficial for the planning department to consider applying lot coverage measurement exemptions for covered porches to other types of housing. Ternigan, like many neighborhoods, has a mix of housing types, and we could see the benefits from having this applied to more different type of multi-use housings, although the previous speaker certainly provided some additional information that maybe it would be best to do that as a separate ordinance rather than try and amend this one. Certainly, we'll leave it up to the powers that be on that. We would like clarification as to whether this proposed amendment would impact setbacks. We just weren't clear. Would the amendment allow encroachment into a setback from the front or side property lines? TCC supports maintaining existing setback requirements, would not like to see those encroached upon. If this code exemption was applied to multi-unit housing as well, would setback requirements pose a challenge for implementation? And that should be a consideration if moving forward in that direction. TCC realizes there are limited ways to address this within municipal code, but we are concerned about enforcement over time. And I know that commissioners asked a few questions related to this. Whether this square footage exemption would be misused to extend extended porches, to extend enclosed porches or arctic entries. For example, in year one, if this is approved, a homeowner builds an additional 180-square-foot porch. In years three to five, they decide to enclose the porch, even though it was only granted as an open-air porch. So we would like to know if porch enclosures require approval by the municipality, go through the approval permitting process, similar to other home additions, or if somebody is just able to go ahead and do that with any approval process. And if a porch enclosure requires approval, the municipality would presumably see that they previously were allowed this additional coverage for an open-air porch only, and presumably could deny the application. But if approval process isn't required, then that could easily be misused as they turn into what should have been an open-air porch into actually an additional, a real addition to their home without benefit of any kind of public review or process. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify on this proposal, and I appreciate the time and consideration.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to testify on this matter? We have a question from Commissioner Strick.
And this is a question through the staff. Rhetorical, somewhat rhetorical, but over the last five years, have you, have we entertained any requests for variances similar to what the builder identified, the first speaker had identified for this issue?
Through the chair, to my knowledge, no. But I'm just one member of the planning department, but I cannot recall a case with a front porch encroaching into a front setback.
So I'm trying to determine, are we trying, what problem are we trying to solve here? And it does sound like we're trying to solve a problem, which was the impetus behind this request initially. It sounds like we have a house that's waiting on a CO that's overbuilt.
No, they don't have to, I'm sorry. Should I speak or not?
Pardon me?
Should I speak? I'm sorry.
This is a question for you. Go ahead.
No, the, the house can be built without a front porch.
Can you come up to the mic if you're going to speak? Thank you.
Sorry. The house can be built without a front porch. It's permitted that way. It's not a problem.
The house you built with the front porch is permitted?
Without a front porch.
And it currently has a CO. I thought you said it was waiting for a CO?
No, the, I'm sorry, I maybe, I wasn't communicating properly. The house is permitted without a front porch, and it's perfectly fine, and everybody's accepting of that. We would love the ability to add a front porch.
Is there no front porch now?
There is no front porch now. No.
Thank you.
So this allows us up to 200 square feet of additional coverage that's not penalized due to the lot coverage, correct? And I'm saying that kind of for edification for the rest of the chair here, the rest of the board here too. So to encourage, so the second speaker identified the issue of, I'm going to call it the unintended consequences, or the two-phase approach to expanding one's home, that enclosure. What restrictions are there in enclosing that additional square footage?
So through the chair, this, yeah, this question was posed to us early on in the process. And you're going to need a building permit to construct a front porch. Now, if that homeowner decides, I'm going to enclose this, I'm not going to get a building permit to enclose it, to rewire it, to insulate it, whatever. I'm just going to do it on a weekend, call it good. The municipality has no knowledge that that has been done, and the neighbor probably is none the wiser, doesn't realize a violation is taking place, so that front porch then gets enclosed. What happens is when that home is bought or sold, a lender could do an inquiry into the compliance of that property. Down the road, if a building permit is taken out on that property, they're going to look to see what is it in compliance with current code now. So it's, it's not something that, you know, land use enforcement's going to be out there with sirens blazing, but it's something that could be caught down the line.
I want to applaud the approach that you're taking here. I just want to make sure that we're not seeing some unintended consequences or issues that pop up. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
On kind of that same point, and just from my own understanding, is there anything about kind of this two-phase approach that's been mentioned that couldn't be done with just a one-phase approach without a permit? I mean, you know, is there anything different about that process that would make it harder than, or easier than just building an enclosed addition in front?
I guess through the chair, I mean, anybody's welcome to go ahead and build anything, anywhere that they want and design it how they want. It's just, and maybe I'm not understanding your question correctly, but I mean, you can go ahead and build anything, anywhere. It's just whether or not it's compliant and whether the proper permits have been taken out. So if somebody wanted to put an enclosed front porch on their home, they could go ahead and do it right now. It's just, it's not going to be compliant with code.
I think you answered most of the questions that, or this is answer most of the questions that were raised in Ms. Gleason's testimony. I had a follow-up question, kind of looking at what steps the commission is going to take moving forward. If the commission decided to move forward just pursuing the single-family home, because that's really all that has been researched to prepare for this case tonight, how would we, would we know if the multifamily or the duplex, triplexes are going to be pursued in the future? Or is this something that if we only deal with single-family, everything kind of is dead in the water from that point on for other areas?
Through the chair, my assumption is just due to a lack of staff resources, if the commission acts on the AO as written tonight, it's going forward as written. We'd be happy to take it up at a later time, but I can't tell you when that would be.
No, that makes sense. Commissioner Gardner, are you back in the queue? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing on this item. And what is the will of the body? Commissioner Strick?
I'll make the motion. In the matter of case number 2019-0142, regarding the proposed lot coverage allowance for front porches, I would recommend we move forward with this on approval and provide to the assembly accordingly.
Move by Commissioner Strick. Is there a second? Second in by Commissioner Looney. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. And while, while it's understood that this only deals with single-family structures, the fact that it could, down the road, include multifamilies, two, three, four, plexes, I believe-